Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the November eighteenth Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And the first thing I'm going to do is welcome a new member that's taking a place. Ray Moore is in. Welcome to the board, sir.
Thank you very much.
I wanted to Jennifer Guthrie's place as she moved on to the city council. Roll call, please, Mel.
Pete Bedakis?
Here.
Frank Malone?
Here.
Bill O'Neal?
Here.
Bowen Young? Richard Lamar?
Here.
Frank Brown?
Here.
Dr. Mary Edwards?
Look, here.
Casey Cole?
Here.
Ray Moore?
Here.
Okay, we have a forum then. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October twenty-first meeting.
I'll make the motion we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor of approval of the minutes from that October twenty-one meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. First order of business today, I think it's Andy. Ocean Blue, this is Z eight twenty-five forty-five, Ocean Blue Cottage's site plan.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission and members of the public. First item is Ocean Blue Cottage subdivision. As you all know, cottage subdivisions are... The process for approval is site plan, which is a little bit odd, but that is the process. So, the applicant requests to construct a seven lot cottage subdivision on just over half an acre of land. Property is located at eleven twenty-four West Lagoon Avenue in Zone BT three. BT three is a tourist business zoning district. It permits cottage subdivisions by right as well as some commercial condominium and other hotel uses. Subject property is shown on the screen, which is highlighted in blue. So you see it there. It's in the eleven hundred block of West Lagoon Avenue. This, uh, this block is primarily, well, is developed with a mixture of different uses. There are a couple of existing cottage subdivisions. There are condominiums along West Beach Boulevard. And then there's a commercial located on the, along the west section of the block with the Wings Development and a couple of restaurants and different things down there. Existing conditions, there is currently a house located on this property. The property, the house will be demolished if this site plan is approved. There are also several sand live oaks located primarily along the frontage of the property. Some of those are in the right of way. And again, the property is Zone BT three. Site plan complies with all of the area and dimensional regulations of the BT three zoning district. As is quite usual with the cottage subdivisions, it proposes less density and less building height than allowed by the underlying zoning. Complies with minimum lot size, minimum lot widths. Building coverages, impervious surface coverage and the setbacks all comply with the underlying zoning. Thirty-two percent of the site will be open landscape space. And then they would provide forty-two parking spaces, all of which are underneath each house, which is in excess of the minimum twenty-eight parking spaces required. So you see, uh, West Lagoon Avenue is to the left-hand portion of the screen. So it'll be one private entryway coming into the site. It comes down to a T at the end, and then the houses along either side of the entryway. And a pool is provided for as an amenity for future guests. Building architecture, all of the houses will be four bedroom, four baths. Approximately twenty-five hundred square feet, including outdoor porches. We do recommend that for lots A and G, those face West Lagoon Avenue, we recommend that windows and architectural details and louvers be provided under the house to screen the parking from West Lagoon Avenue. Have spoken with the applicant. They agreed to, uh, to that condition, which we'll go over whenever we get to the recommendation section. Here are the proposed floor plans. You can see the parking underneath the building as well as, uh, first floor and then the second floor. Access, again, it's access from West Lagoon Drive. The portion of the private driveway within the West Lagoon Avenue will be paved. The remainder of the private drive will be brick pavers. There is a three-foot wide pedestrian access provided along one side of the street. Those brick, it'll be also made out of brick pavers, which will be a change in material or color so it can be delineated for the future residents so they'll know it's a pedestrian access. Street names have been approved by Ballin County E nine one one. And it complies with the access standards of the zoning ordinance. Landscaping, a landscape plan was provided, and it complies with the landscape regulations with the exception of two requested waivers. Those requested waivers are to place the fence on the, on the exterior to the landscaping and reduce the landscape buffer from ten feet to seven and a half feet. Otherwise, the proposed quantities, materials of landscaping is as required by the zoning ordinance. And as you can see, primarily, the, primarily in this instance, it's all perimeter landscaping because that's what our zoning ordinance requires. Tree protection, they did submit a tree survey. There are ten protected trees which will be removed because of this development. All of those ten protected trees are located within an area of the site, which is proposed to be developed, and there is no tree remediation because of that. Primarily, those trees are sand live oaks. They are proposing to save one heritage sand-like, sand live oak tree, which is on the east property line. It's twenty-four inches. And they've earned four tree credits by saving that sand live oak tree. Drainage and grading, a plan has been reviewed and approved by the engineering department. Again, this site is basically sand, so it's highly pervious. So utilizing the brick paver, pervious brick pavers and some small swales is basically how the drainage plan will work. It's basically gonna, rain will, rainwater will hit the site and it'll drain into the soil or drain into the pervious parking area. Lighting plan has also been provided. They propose two, two pole mounted lights. They're full cutoff and comply with the minimum standards of the zoning ordinance. Trash collection, similar to other cottage developments, we do not allow trash cans to be placed along West Lagoon Avenue. There is a note provided on the plans that the trash will be serviced from the interior of the development. And the applicant has provided a letter from Republic Services stating that the development can be serviced from the interior. The fire marshal and engineering department have reviewed and approved the site plan. So they are requesting three zoning modifications. Article eleven dash eleven K and Article twelve dash one allow the planning commission to grant modification requests for cottage developments. So the three requested modifications. Number one is obtain a building permit prior to recordation of the plat. This is something that you guys generally grant. I think we probably grant it on every single cottage development. Uh, number two, reduce the required ten-foot landscape strip to seven and a half feet. Again, this is a common request. Usually it's asking to reduce it from ten feet to five feet. So they are only requesting two and a half feet on either side. And then the third request, which is also a common request, is to place a buffer fence on the property line. The regulations state that the landscaping shall be placed to the exterior of the buffer fence. City staff does support all three of the applicant's modification requests. With that, our recommendation is one of approval with three conditions. The first condition covers the three modifications, modification requests that the applicant is applying for. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the following conditions shall be addressed. A is windows, architectural details and louvers to screen the parking shall be added to the north facades of the houses on lots A and G that face West Lagoon Avenue. Two B has been addressed by the applicant. They submitted a revised landscape plan today that complies with the minimum tree size requirements of the landscape plans. So I've crossed out that one. And then Ida, condition number three is the declaration of protected covenants for Ocean Blue Cottage shall be recorded. And the recordation number denoted on the subdivision plat prior to the issuance of a C of O or any of the future houses. Be happy to answer any questions.
Where's the proposed trash receptacle gonna go on the property? Is it straight back down the?
So they will be, they'll utilize individual cans and they'll be placed underneath each unit.
Okay.
Do we have enough room for that big truck to get in there?
Uh, they submitted a letter from Republic Services saying that they can access the property. I believe the fire, the fire truck can get to the rear of the property also. So I would assume that a dump truck can as well.
One in and out interest there.
That's right.
That's all I had.
Can you explain the fence? Is the entire east and west and south going to be fenced with a plantation-style privacy fence?
Yes, sir.
And no landscaping exterior of the boarded fence?
That's correct.
Can you put up the graphic that shows the adjacent property owners? What is that gonna be? What are they, what are we doing to their neighbors by putting a, I'm assuming an eight-foot privacy fence? Ten foot, six foot?
I think it's six.
Six foot? Without any landscaping to soften the exterior of somebody else's fence?
That's a normal... That is very normal of these cottage subdivision developments that they, they get a waiver to place the landscaping on the interior side and not place it on the exterior side. So what it will do to the neighbors is they'll have a fence next door. And there may be, let me go back to our...
Yes, so maintain the landscaping because they're on their property.
Yeah. That's been the, kind of the, the argument from the development side. When the cottage subdivision regulations were adopted, I remember some of the applicants saying, well, we can't maintain our landscaping if it's not on our side of the fence. And therefore, you guys have granted waivers.
And if the fence becomes neglected or derelict, is there a mechanism in place for?
Yes, sir.
Getting that to be repaired?
Yes, sir. There's a, there's a landscape maintenance section in our zoning ordinance that applies to the fencing as well as any landscaping that becomes dead or removed or things of that nature. Trying to look and see if there is a fence.
There is. On the, on the south is the Seacrest Overflow Parking, and there is a fence already existing on that property. On the west side is a very similar complex.
Playa Blanca Cottage Develop...
Yeah, and it has a fence that runs most of its property line.
Similar situation.
Yes.
Yeah. I think, I think the fence on the...
You can't put landscaping between two fences either.
Yeah. The, on Playa Blanca to the west of the fence goes, there's some wetlands back there, so they built the fence to the wetlands. There are no wetlands on this property. They did submit a wetland delineation study.
Okay, any more questions up here? There's a developer here today. Just in case anybody has questions, thanks for coming up. And you are?
Uh, I'm Noah Bird with Leave Engineering. I'd be happy to answer your question.
Y'all have any questions for the developers represented? Y'all, you want me to start pretty quick or what's your schedule?
I'm, I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, if there are no questions, it's not a public hearing on this one. So, chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Ocean Blue Cottage subdivision site plan with staff recommendations.
Second.
Second, motion and a second. Any questions, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, our next... Our first public hearing, Andy again. Z eight twenty-five fifty, Lot twenty-five, Bonsecour Village South Final Subdivision Plat. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Before I go to the next application, I will quickly go over the public hearing guidelines since the remainder of the agenda. All of these items are public hearings. Please silence your cell phones. Staff will present each item. At that point, the chairman will open the public hearing. The public may address the commissioners by coming to the microphone. Please state your name, address, and any comments should be directed towards the commissioners. Try to refrain from repeating anything that someone else has said. At that point, the chairman will close the public hearing, and the commissioners will hold any discussion and vote on each individual application. So with that, the first public hearing is Z eight twenty-five fifty. It's a final subdivision plat for Lot twenty-five, Bonsecour Village South. The applicant seeks to subdivide one lot into two lots. Here are the location maps. This property is within the Bonsecour Village Development. You see it highlighted in red. Uh, the property is currently zoned P U D with a underlying zoning of R one four. There's a couple photographs of the existing conditions of, of the lot. It's currently vacant, wooded, is situated on the Intracoastal Waterway. Again, the primary uses within the vicinity are single-family houses within the Bonsecour Village P U D. You will recall, a couple months ago, uh, the lots along the, um, I guess there's five, six lots within Bonsecour Village South came before the planning commission to be rezoned basically into the Bonsecour Village P U D. You guys make a recommendation to approve that. It was forwarded to the city council, and on September twenty-second, the city council approved a ordinance rezoning those properties to R one four, underlying zoning of R one four, uh, and brought them into the Bonsecour Village P U D. Kind of the purpose of that was so that they could subdivide the proper, those, uh, is it six properties into two lots apiece? So that's kind of where we are today, is we've got the first application to subdivide one of those lots. We did publicly notice, notice this application as required by the subdivision regulations. And we have not received any correspondence from the public notification. Again, details of the request, split one lot into two lots. Largest lot is ten, just over, just at ten thousand six hundred square feet and fifty-nine feet in width. Lot twenty-five B is seven thousand seven hundred seventy-three square feet and fifty-six feet in lot width. The building setbacks will mirror the setbacks as previously approved on the, uh, Bonsecour Village South subdivision as well as a P U D amendment, which was recently approved by the city council. So on the right-hand side, you see the, the proposed subdivision at twenty, Lot twenty-five A and Lot twenty-five B. The proposed subdivision complies with the minimum standards of the Bonsecour Village South subdivision as well as the recent Bonsecour Village P U D amendment. As required by the recent P U D amendment, the applicant did include a note on the plat that indicates lots twenty-five A and twenty-five B are not allowed to be re-subdivided. That was a condition of approval by the city council. The subdivision complies with the minor plat standards set forth in the subdivision regulations. And the fire marshal and engineering department have reviewed and approved the plat. So a couple of changes since your, since the staff report went out on Friday, they have submitted a revised plat. So number one is, has been addressed. So the condition recommend, recommend, recommended condition, number two is is only for Lot twenty-four is P U D. That's an adjacent lot, and the requirement of our subdivision regulations is that you label the zoning of surrounding properties. I think they put R one one. That's just a simple correction they need, need to do. And then condition number four, an explanation of drainage easements shall be provided on the plat. I've discussed that with the surveyor, and he's gonna add that to the plat. So with that, we recommend approval. And both those conditions shall be completed prior to recording of the plat. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Andy. Any questions from commissioners? Okay, I will now open up the public hearing. Do we have the applicant here? Okay. Okay, does anybody have any comments they'd like to make about this subdivision of this lot split? Anybody? Okay, I rushed up at once. All right. Okay, I will close the public hearing and we'll entertain a motion from the chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve Lot twenty-five, Bonsecour Village South subdivision with staff recommendations as presented.
Thank you, Grant. Have a second. Second. Second, Phil Harris. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, our next public hearing is... Z eight twenty-five oh six, Vacation Rental Signs and Zoning Text Amendment. This is a continuation of the discussions we had last meeting, correct?
Yes, sir. This was postponed from last month's meeting. Uh, I'll do a, a quick recap. Well, I'll start by saying, you know, there was some discussion at the last meeting about, uh, ability to find house numbers and, and find the locations. We kind of looked into that. We researched that. We considered different ideas. And really, the kind of answer we came up with is, uh, you could have a mailbox and you can put your house number on the mailbox. Some don't have mailboxes, but they do have the option of installing a mailbox. So I, I think that's probably the easiest answer as far as getting a house number out on the, out near the street. So that, that's one of the things we did consider. So with that said, we are not currently proposing any changes from what was presented in October. However, I will kind of go through a, a fast recap if I, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so this is a shot of West Beach. And it's, I know it's hard to tell in, in an image like this, but just in this caption there or this captured image, there are seventeen of these kind of freestanding signs that, uh, that are visible. The, the complaint we're hearing, the concern we're having is just the sign clutter. There's just too many signs. Some of them are too big. Some are too close to the road. It's just, it's a safety and an aesthetic issue. So we're trying to solve that with this proposed text amendment. Uh, so within the amendment, we're just, we're rewording it, but we're making it clear where vacation rental dwelling units are allowed. So they're within the vacation rental overlay, which is mostly West Beach. I think I have a picture. And then some of Highway one eighty. Also within the BEN, Neighborhood Business, BG, General Business, BT, Tourist Business, ICW North, ICW South, and then in areas that are designated through P U D or C U P. And then it, it just spells out specifically where they're prohibited. Uh, so here's the map of that overlay. So, so most of these, if not all, are all zoned. Some type of single family, R one four, R two, something. Uh, but they're the, within the overlay that allow the vacation rental, uh, uses. So the proposed signage, and I have some graphics, will, is, uh, the street, or the house number, no more than eight inches in height, not more than thirty-six inches in width, invisible from the roadway. An identification sign that may be mounted flat on the front facade up to six square feet. A nameplate sign up to two square feet on the front, on the facade. And then on Gulf's front lots, uh, we would allow a, a freestanding sign on either side of the, of the structure, up to sixty square inches. This just spells out the prohibited signs, the snipe and window signs, and then basically all other signs that are not allowed or detached or fence signs are prohibited. And then we just reiterate that no signs are allowed within or over the public right of way. So here's the graphic. We kind of put together that, that's, it kind of shows what's allowed, and it's not to scale. That's true, but it's really just about the types of signs that are allowed. So there's an address number. If you will note, uh, on the back wall, we provided some new, um, visual aids. So from that wall to the front of the dais here is about thirty-five feet. The setback on most of these houses, up and down West Beach especially, are about thirty, maybe thirty-five feet. Now, setback from property line, that's not necessarily from the asphalt. But, so, you know, add a few feet so that the one on the screen, this address number, is that three, six, five, four, two. That's eight inches tall. That's thirty-six inches wide. So, you know, that, that's the size of that sign from thirty-five feet away. The identification sign is the six square feet. That's the lower right sign that says, the sign is six square feet. So those letters are about two inches tall. Again, we're not regulating the content or the message, so you can, you can play with that area and do any kind of message you want, any size, font, or graphics, or anything within, within that square footage. Now, we chose two feet by three feet there, but you know, you can do any combination that works out to be six square feet. Uh, the nameplate sign is the two square foot, kind of on the upper left, that says two square feet. Uh, I didn't do an example of these. These are those fenced attached signs that are allowed for Gulf front lots on either side. Uh, so here's combined. Now, the, these regulations apply to each dwelling unit. So if you have a, a house structure that's a only single family, these are the signs you may have. If you have a duplex or maybe a triplex or something, but if you have a duplex, you, you, you basically double the signs. You can have these defined signs per dwelling unit. So again, i- i- if, if this is a house on West Beach, West Lagoon, that's a duplex, you can have two address numbers, two nameplates, two identification signs. Uh, that's the, kind of the end of that quick report. Uh, I will say, I sent emails out to all the vacation rental agencies from last time. I'm just now discovering, I don't know if anybody received my emails. We're, we're learning that I emailed... Yeah, so very sorry about that. I sent them all out yesterday. I sent planning commission emails yesterday. We just discovered there's some type of email problem, so they're all getting bounced back to us. So I do apologize on that. I did attempt to send an email, but just now learning that they didn't go out. That's the end of my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
What, Scott, what is the eight square foot sign?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that was just one I had printed. So I just, I just put that... So I just, I just put that on the wall, on the wall, just if you wanted to.
But that's not part of this proposal?
No, sir. Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have mentioned that. That, I just, we already had it printed because we were just seeing what they look like. So there's a slightly bigger sign back there.
Thanks for doing that, by the way.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you for putting it.
That's a big help. Anybody else got any questions up here? Or open up the public?
All right, the, uh, on the name, the two square foot?
Yes, sir.
Deal? I'm sure there's many rental homes down there now that are, uh, have signs on the house larger than two square feet. So what is the? I mean, is that making it non-conforming or?
It, it would, and I think that's, that's worth discussing. Uh, I, I feel like the biggest concern that we're facing, that we're hearing about are the freestanding signs, particular ones that are already probably non-compliant to begin with. But, uh, the ordinance can be written in a way where there's a time limit given so many months, so many days that they need to come in compliance. We could consider just allowing them to remain non-conforming. But if, if in the event you had to replace it, you had to change it, they fall apart, whatever, you, you can't replace a non-conforming. So, or, or whatever the degree of non-conformity is, so.
But the main complaint has been the, the amount of signs.
I would say that's the primary.
In or near the right of way.
Yeah, that, now there are some, you know, building mounted signs that are well beyond compliance as well, that there may be some here. But I'd say the primary concern we're hearing are the freestanding, uh, out near the road.
I mean, I, cause I wouldn't be opposed to striking that from the two square foot identification, just because, I mean, I think we're complicating what we're trying to.
When, when you say strike, what do you?
Or take out, because it's kind of complicating the, um, the objective here is basically the, all the signs at the road or in, at, or near or in the right of way.
Now, now that, none of these are on the road. These are on.
No, I know that, but, but we're addressing the two square foot, which is the nameplate of what's already on the houses, right?
Presumably, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And, and I just, I'm just thinking there hadn't been a problem with that, but I don't know. But I think the, this is, the objective here was to address mainly all the signs at or near the right of way and all that. But, um, I don't know, unless someone else has a different feeling about the identification.
I do the real estate companies know how far back the right of way goes, to where they know that they're not in the right of way.
We'll have to have a proper survey or they have identified the corners. I don't know if we could potentially help with that, but, uh,
Utilities.
Yeah, utilities. I mean, al- often, not always, often the utility poles are right at the right of way. So typically beyond that is their property.
Gotcha. Okay.
It's fairly easy.
Yeah.
Some of the real estate kind of have these big signs on the lots for sale and stuff. That doesn't, that doesn't come into, into play here. You weren't talking about vacation rental signs, correct?
Well, these are all signs. Again, we're not, so, so these are signs on properties that are authorized for vacation rentals. So that would apply for every sign. Again, we don't, we're not regulating the content. So you can say, you know, you can name your, your house, whatever you name it. You can advertise your company. You can say, you know, have a great day, for sale. Yeah, so, so you can use this square footage for any message you want to use it for. Although maybe the address sign, we do require that, but the, the other square footage you, you can use for any message you want. For sale, for rent, you know, have a nice day and anything, vote for whomever. You know, the, the, those messages, we're, we're not regulating.
Okay, anybody else have any questions up here? Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. Please come up, identify yourself if y'all want to address this body with regarding this text amendment.
And I will say while you're coming up, the, again, just as a reminder for everyone, the zoning text amendment is, just like a rezoning, you're recommending to the council. So, uh, whatever action takes place this afternoon, the city council will still hear a report. They will have their own public hearing prior to any, any action that they take.
Done at the final say.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Brian Harris, Harris Vacations. Really the same message I came last time. I think that this is a, a business overlay district. These are businesses. Uh, I think they should have a right to signage. I think that the signs at or near the road is reasonable, just like a real estate signs are reasonable. Uh, construction project signs are reasonable. I was going down West Beach just this morning, looking for a house way down in the, beyond the 2000 block. So they get real, real wide there, lots too. I knew it was a Harris Vacation Home. I knew that that home had a name, a lazy lagoon. I went down until I saw a Harris Vacation sign. It said a lazy lagoon on it. I turned in on the driveway, found the house. I think that signage is reasonable for a business. And I think that, um, we should find another way to remedy a problem, if there's a problem, rather than trying to put all the signs on the houses. I just don't think that's going to be a good solution. I think you're going to have a lot of people looking at houses to the left and right and not looking at the road. I think that's going to be a big problem. Safety problem for pedestrians. Problem for congestion as people pull in driveways and back out on the highway and turn around because they miss the property.
God, this amendment just allows the signs up near the road, right?
No, it, it would prohibit the signs near the road.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, I'm, I'm, yeah, yeah, that would be prohibited.
He uses the signs, you know, in, in the front to turn in, so will this eliminate that?
Yes, sir. It would eliminate those. That would make those, yeah. It would prohibit those. The, the only signs allowed, assuming this amendment happens as written, would be those, those that are on the facade of the house, or if you're Gulf side, those really small ones on either side. But those are 60 square inches and they had to be well back from the road, so.
So I would like to propose, you know, uh, an amendment that would be written where you can have a vacation rental sign that sits along the, you know, the easement, the setback. So everything's uniform, even if you want to make the height, so the height is uniform. You know, I think that's reasonable. I think there's some, a lot of reasonable things that we can do and still have the, the business signage that, um, any business would want, you know, to have.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your input. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
So Jeff Caberino, Gulf Shores Vacation Rentals. A little surprised that we're 30 days later and we're back in the same place that we were 30 days ago. Uh, I looked up before I came a week ago to see if there was any changes on the site. And didn't, it was, it didn't appear as though there were any changes. I actually emailed you yesterday, never got a response. So we're, we're back in the same place that we were 30 days ago. And I don't, it doesn't feel like any of our comments were considered or, or included in this, in this proposal. So, so a couple of, a couple of comments. We're, I was also just down on the beach yesterday at our properties. And, and what was characterized last time, I, I do take a bit of an offense to pollution, sign pollution. That's what it was called. I take offense to that. It's not sign pollution. These are, these are signs for businesses that are real estate development, either, either, either sales signs or vacation rental signs. And if these are landmarks to let people know, not only, of course, they're advertising signs, of course they are. Cause that's what this is. It's a business overlay district, you know? And, and last year, not to be, not to be too pointed in this comment, but my little small company provided more than a million dollars in lodging taxes to the city. That's a lot of money, right? And that's coming from what we do for a living. And, and to take these signs and to take them off the road and to put them all the way back on the houses. And, and the, the picture that is reflected is on West Beach and probably the 1300 or 1200 block of West Beach. Those are 50-foot lots. Most of those houses are about 50 feet off the road, maybe 60. So that part of the beach is absolutely denser. There's no doubt about it. And, and we're not saying it's not. So you're going to have obviously more signs because it's only 50-foot lots and there's going to be a sign every 50 feet. But I took a picture in the 1400 block, both east and west, and I couldn't even see a sign between foliage, uh, not foliage, uh, uh, plants that are on the, you know, on the, on the lots and where they are relative to the poles. It, you know, I mean, to, to characterize this as pollution, I think is, is an overstep. So you, you've also, I don't think we've addressed this, you know, I think Frank, you began to address this. So we've got houses that literally, I'm going to call them, these are part of the houses. They've literally, like artistically made their name and put it on the house. And, and to, to actually name the houses, that's one of the things we do is we brand these houses so that people, when they're coming, they're not only looking for an address, but they're also looking for the name of the property. And let's just say, for example, a property leaves my inventory and goes to, to Harris's property. It, it's still called whatever that name of that property is. So, so it's branding the property. And, and many of these owners, including one that's in the, in the crowd right now, it's one of our owners. He is named, he's got a, it's probably, I don't know, maybe six foot square. I don't even know. He can probably tell you. Right? So it's on the house. It's literally on the house and it's very, it's part of the house. It's part of the, the color. It, it's, 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 it's cosmetic and it's aesthetic, aesthetic, but it's naming the house. So we haven't addressed that. Now, if, if, if this does move forward, I think we absolutely need to consider, anything that's on these houses right now need to stay on these houses. I mean, they've, they've literally painted these houses and aesthetically put these on and, and it's part of the house. So to me, that's the naming of the house. That has nothing to do with signage. This is not about advertising. If you drove down there right now, you'd see houses that have signs that don't have vacation rental signs because they're not vacation rental homes. They have signs and they're called ABC property. So you're going to ask them to take that sign and stick it back on, on their, all the way back on their house. The other thing to consider that I don't think is being considered, there is a difference between, and I, and I, and I, we've heard this a couple of times. 2000 block, in the 2000 block, these lots become, they go from 50 foot, generally 50 to 75 feet to 100 foot lots. And they're also way back off the road, as much as 150 feet off the road. I promise you, you're not seeing any of that in the daylight. And you're certainly not seeing any of that at nighttime, not a chance in hell. So you, you, there's like, this is worthless and this is not going to help at all. So I think you've literally taken this out of our hands. And, and I think that what, what Harris, um, Brian said last time is there are some ordinances in place and they're not being policed and they're, and they're not being, they're not being, there's not, there's not a, a standard that we're actually going by. If we just did that, you'd absolutely make, there'd be a difference made. There's also what I'll call monument signs, right? These big signs. I've got a couple of owners, including, again, I want to hear in the crowd. He's got a, he's got a monument sign that's sitting out in front of his house. And it's again, maybe about four by four. It's very pretty. It's, it's artistically done. And, and to me, that's not a sales sign. That is a monument sign. And we've got a number of owners who've done the same. We have a couple of owners who have fence panels that are on either side of the driveway. And those fence panels are just giving some definition to the driveway. And on them, it has sign, name, morning glory, morning call, whatever it is. And so there's not, so if, so if that's the case, then those all have to go away as well. And all that can be put up is a, a sign that is this big, that is 150 feet off the road. If you're on the 2000 block or farther down, none of these things are going to be seen, zero. And I don't think any of this is, none of those things, none of those issues have been addressed in, in this, in this proposal at all. And so I, I, I urge you guys to really look at this. You're, you're taking, you're, I think this is punishment. I do. I think this is punishment to, to us who do business down there. And I think it's, I think it's penal, very penal. So I ask you, I urge you guys to consider something different than this. If you, if we just, the ordinances that are in place, if we just policed and implemented those, I think it would make a huge difference. I think we talked about saying one sign and that sign in the, in the, can't be in the setback, has to be right at the setback or, or even with it. And either on the east side or the west side of the driveway. That makes perfect sense. You drive down and everything is going to be lined up. Cause there are problems. There are, there are cases when there's a sign on the east side of one and one on the west side of the other, I guess it's the west and the east, and they literally sit about five. Because in that, in that area, there's only 20 feet between the houses and they're right on those property lines. And they're literally lining up like this, you know, next to one another. And it's very difficult to see which houses this one belonged to. There was also discussion about putting, uh, uh, the numbers, right, on the actual pole that's going to be in that setback. That'll have a name of it. You could put a name of the property and maybe an address of the property. The suggestion of a mailbox, most of the houses down there are not occupied by owners. They're, they're, with the exception, you know, again, we have an owner who's here, he's here probably six months out of the year. He has a mailbox. Most of them don't have mailbox. To me, that's more cluttered than a sign. They'll never be used. There's no mail being delivered to these houses. So putting a mailbox out there makes that even more cluttered as far as I'm concerned. Then what are we going to standardize on a mailbox? Have you done that? Is it going to be this big? Is it going to be this big? I mean, are people going to put signs on mailboxes? Again, I think we're opening up a can of worms and, 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 and I, I, again, I just urge you guys to reconsider. Cause I, I hope if this goes in front of the city council, I'll absolutely be there and, and, and I will poll every one of them and I'll get them aside and I'll ask them to really reconsider this. Cause I think this is, is, this is not, I don't, I, and I, I'm still, I still don't know what the answer is on this. So I'm going to ask it again. Who's complaining? Who's complaining? One person on the beach? Two people that happen to be on the beach that happen to be owners of houses down there? Uh, who's complaining? Who? Somebody. Well, okay, since somebody complained, now we're going to make a change. It's going to be penal. And I think that's, again, I, I appreciate your time and apologize for my energy, but this is, I think this is the wrong direction. So, thanks.
So you really feel like you'll be hurt if the sign's not out there?
Yeah, yes, this is.
People recognizing where the house is.
It is. I mean, it's, it's, again, let's be fair. It is an advertising sign. It absolutely is. We, we are proud of our houses that we manage and we want people to know as, as is Brian, as is Kaiser, as is Prickett. We put them out there so people know this is a, a house that we manage. And, and then they also can see that we have other houses that might be like those houses. Again, we're a small player and we're a rounding error, guys. We're 37 houses in a market that has 16,000 rentable units. But everything that we manage is on West Beach and it's going to be impacted by these particular ordinance. Every single property that we have is going to be impacted by this. So a longer answer, short answer, yes, sir.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just, just a couple of comments from a council seat, Jeff. I think when we, when we talk about and, and I don't remember what the term was that you were offended by, but maybe that wasn't the right term, pollution. But as we, uh, as we've, just as we've done to leave, leave only footprints. I mean, I think everybody would agree that's improved the environment on the beach for visitors and residents. And then what we've just recently done with trash can program, impossible to police a disaster every day with being able to leave them out as long as people were leaving them out and pick up time. So I think this is along the same lines of, so, you know, have people complained? I've, I've heard, I've had people, why is everything on the beach for sale? Because they're not seeing rent or sale. They're seeing all these real estate signs. So there is some of that, but I think there's also a desire to improve the aesthetics. And the sign management is, it's hard. You say police it. You know, what are we going to hire? Two more officers to go up and down the beach every day, moving signs around? It's not practical. So we're not trying to take, this is not trying to take your advertising sign away. It's moving it to the house where it's uniform and we don't have to manage all that. But it's in the same place that these house names are that you're wanting to protect. It's in the same place as the address numbers are for most of the people that you think's appropriate and not a mailbox, which I agree. We start the mailbox program, you know, people that have mail, they get mail. But, uh, a house number could go on a, a nice decorative post that was uniformed so that people driving down the beach looking for 36542 could identify it at the street. It is hard. Go to, go down West Beach at night and you're trying to find names on the house at night and house numbers on the house at night. It's difficult. But, but your marketing signs aren't going to be seen at night out in the front yards, any better than they're going to be attached to the house. But, but your marketing signs aren't gonna be seen at night out in the front yards, any better than they're gonna be attached to the house.
Can I speak to that, Phillip? I mean, most of ours, our signs, I don't know about Jeff's, are reflective. So they absolutely, you're, you're seeing the number and the name and the company name. You know, illuminated by the headlights, cause they're reflective.
I did see some signs have lights on them too. Maybe not y'all's, but I, I know there's some real estate sales signs have lights on them.
Sure there are some.
Yeah, yeah.
I think to your, to your point, don't pick, pick like, oh. The, the number is required to be a house. That's, that's not the argument. That, that shouldn't, as far as this goes, shouldn't be a part of it. It's required. Matter of fact, you have to have house numbers on the beach side as well for, for EMT. So those are required by code regardless of whether there's a sign. And, and you cannot see them. You cannot see those numbers from the street. You cannot. I, I, you can't see those signs even on the twelve, the, the, the denser part of West Beach. And not, cause once again, we had turtle, turtle lights. So you can't even have real lights on the house. So these, there's these red, look like, there's these red lights, even if they're underpinning lights. They're, I mean, these houses are dark. I mean, they are dark. When we finish this, go right down there at five thirty. People not be able to see anything on the house. Cannot.
Most of the management signs up and down the beach don't have house names and addresses on them. They have the marketing company, management company's name on them. So if, if somebody's coming in town, they're going down West Beach and Jeff's house management company's got ten houses down there. You can see that whether it was different real estate companies.
It's a great idea.
So they're, they're looking for, they're seeing a lot of your signs. That's not helping them find the house.
Well, it's the first indicator that they're in the right spot. So they're getting ninety percent of the way there with the, um, Apple map or Google map. We're just looking for the last fifty feet. And if your primary objective is safety, then moving those off the street, like I said, looking left and right, driving down West Beach at thirty-five miles an hour. Your primary objective is safety is set in the wrong direction.
Okay. Because we're recording, if y'all have comments, please come up to the mic so we can get it on.
Uh, another comment, I mean, this is going down the same path. If we're regulating the vacation rental signs in this district, we should probably be regulating, you know, condos, restaurants, trades, retail in the same fashion. Like if we're gonna remove the vacation rental signs from the right of way, we need to be removing all the signs from the right of way. So I think that, I mean, we're a business just like they're a business. We're paying taxes just like they're paying taxes. Um, there's no difference.
For the businesses, there are, there are separate regulations for sign sizes, locations, et cetera, and they are.
Or businesses in the same district, I don't see where there's a really a distinction.
For, no.
We're, we're operating businesses in the same district, on the same block of street.
Your statement was you think that those should be regulated as well, and I'm just saying that they are. Those, the signs at commercial establishments, retail, et cetera.
Or condos.
Have, have signage.
Right, or a condo. And I see a lot of those with signage.
There are no signage regulations now for the vacation rental signs.
But I see, I see signs in those types of businesses on the roadway. And that doesn't seem to be an issue. And I think if we had the same type of regulation that allowed an organized, reasonable signage on the right of way, that should be appropriate and should be reasonable. I don't think we have to take all the signage on the roadway and put it on the building. It's just not practical.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Yeah, somebody else wanted to say something. The gentleman in the blue shirt, did you wanna? You wanna come up and say something? Identify yourself, sir.
Yeah, my, my only comment was just that if your objective is safety, then moving all these signs away from the street and onto the houses, you're just gonna create a problem where somebody's driving thirty-five miles an hour down the street where we already don't have sidewalks. We, we're now doing this trash program, which I agree is, is, is a good thing to kinda help clean things up. It's certainly improved things. It's created opportunity for business as well. But if your objective is safety, then you're now gonna have people driving down West Beach at night in the dark, looking this way instead of down the street. And we've already had people run into the sign at the end of West Beach Laguna Key like three times this year. Is this gonna improve that? I would argue no. Um, I would also, I worked on the beach five years for beach service before and after sunset every day. It's really, really challenging to see these houses, the numbers, even as they are. So if you have a first indicator on the street, this is kinda what you're looking for. They know the branding. We sent them in many cases, five emails, ten emails before their arrival. They know what our logo looks like. They know what our phone number is. They're seeing a first indicator. I'm in the right neighborhood. Okay. That's the one I'm looking for. So again, if, if it's, if safety is what we're really concerned about, then this is, I think, a bad, bad move here. So.
Your name and your company, sir.
My name's Wilson Gabarino. I work for Gulf Shores Vacation Rentals. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
I'm Jeff Lacob, owner of twenty-two eleven West Beach, and, uh, I'm the guy that Jeff was referring to and Wilson also. But we rented here in Gulf Shores for three or four years while my son was playing baseball at the University of Mobile in, uh, the early two thousands. And then for four or five years before we bought. And every, and everything they just said is true about trying to find your house at night on West Beach. It's almost impossible to see your house. And so we do have the monument sign that Jeff was referring to. And we have lights on ours so that you can see it. But when we were renting here, it was very, very difficult to try to figure out where you're trying to turn left or right. Especially, yeah, down on West Beach, which is very dark at night. So, and the other thing that, uh, Jeff and I were talking about yesterday, if you do try to put everything behind the utility poles, it's gonna be so far off the road, it's gonna be impossible to see too. So I think the signs out on the street are extremely important to be able to find your house. And of course, there has to be maximums, uh, of how big they should be. You don't wanna thirty foot by thirty foot billboard out there, but you know, everything has to be within reason. But I don't think it would be within reason to put it behind the utility poles or only have them on the houses, or especially only have them on the mailboxes.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Anybody else wanna come in?
But, but am I clear that, cause you've said right away a couple of times that your,
Yeah, come up, Phillip.
Your recommendation is that the signs are placed in the right of way.
No, I'm saying whatever, whatever the current regulations, I think they say at the right of way. Or, or you cannot be inside of the east, right?
Just wanna make.
So street to the, I, I say telephone poles. It may not exactly be the telephone poles, but that is a fairly good indicator. Kinda looking at a CCL. All you have to do is walk out to the beach and look down. And you can see the CCL, cause all the houses are right on the CCL. So I, I, I'm presuming that the telephone pole is that, is the, is the right of way. And so it's on the right of way. I, I will tell you specifically on Jeff's house. There's a, there's landscaping that's on his east, that are, the bushes are this high and they go all the way out to the street. So the sign that we have out there can't even be seen and it's in the proper place. And it can't be seen on the other side of his house because of landscaping that's blocking it. So it's, it's not even gonna be seen on the street. I mean, it's gonna be difficult. I, I would, I would be okay, your, your comment about the, the, um, uh, the addresses. Part of that was a business decision, right? So we just changed our signs and we, we spent a lot of money to change the signs and to put them all out at the streets. And we do wanna put on, so you've got the post. It's just a one, it's a four by four post or six by six post and the sign's on it. We, we do, we do wanna put the name of the house, if we're allowed, underneath the, this this six foot square and then the address as well on that. Brian does that already. Others do it as well. And it, it is a, it is an easier way for people to find the house. We just haven't gotten, we haven't gotten there yet. And then this came up and I'm like, well, I'm not gonna spend much money on something that's gonna be thrown away. So I would be okay, and Brian, I presume would be as well, if that was part of the ordinance that as part of that sign, you, you can, or maybe, maybe you're required to put the name of the house and at least the, the address on the actual sign. Then it makes the, the markers so much easier. So I, again, I would be okay with that. We were moving in that direction anyway. We postponed because of this, this discussion right now. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else up here have any questions?
I, I can appreciate what the city's trying to do aesthetically, enhancing the visual aspects of West Beach. But I, I do kinda side with the professional operators with these posted signs. To your point, I think there's a lot of value in the sign, but limiting the riders underneath and not junk that up as well. If you did a, a nameplate with the rider of the house name and the address and stop it at that, you know, it, it starts getting trashy with private pool, golf front, six bedrooms. Then, then you get into that aspect of junking it up again. I think we should be good partners with our professional operators. Um, I think it would pose an undue stress. Sixteen percent bed tax is already high, highest in pretty much the Gulf Coast. But I would side with the professional operators on this one, but doing a better job of compliance and limiting what can be on that six foot sign as far as the sign and the riders. It's important to get people down here and, and safely to these accommodations. I did it for twenty-three years, twenty-two hundred vacation rentals in three states. Um, so I see a lot of value in it. I think we can do a better job compliant, compliance wise on what can be on those signs by the road and making sure they're in the right place.
I, I, I've got one comment too. I, I kinda mirror what he's saying. I'd much rather see us do something about the garbage cans that lie on the street than, than to pick on the, you know, the people that are doing business here. That's just my thoughts. I think the proper labeling of the name and the number. And let's work on other stuff that we can do something about, which is the trash cans. Just stay out there and look, look idiots. Anyway, that's just my thoughts. Anybody else? Anybody else got a thought? Ray, you got a thought?
Kinda. If you, uh, when you go down West Beach, uh, you may have two signs at the same house. But if you get back off of the right of way and say you're going westbound, you put your sign, one property sign at the, at the right of way on the west side of your property and put your address, you could have Harris Properties, the address, house address, and that's it. That would make it ea-, if you had it going westbound, everything's on the west side. And if you're coming eastbound, you out, you miss your place, you're going, you go down, everything's on the east side coming back. One sign, one, uh, one address at the bottom. And like they said, no pool, no, you know, just a simple Harrah's or whomever and the address. And they all be the exact same distance off the road and you know what you're looking for with one sign. I, that makes sense. Makes sense to me.
Thanks for your comments, sir. Brian, you?
It seems like we're getting, uh, feedback that's very consistent about having sign at the right of way. You know, should we submit maybe a, a, a proposal even on our own regulation of this should be the sign size, one rider, here's where it's gonna be? Would that, would that be helpful from us as business owners?
Well, it's our decision and it's there.
Yeah, well, just for some feedback, um, we do, we are very limited on what language or content or message that we can regulate. So I like the idea of saying it's gotta have the whatever address, it's gotta have the house number. But that, I would definitely need to talk to the city attorney for that. But yeah, we're very limited on what language and message that we can regulate, that we can compel or we can prohibit. So that's, that's just something to keep in mind. I'd also very much request that, um, some recommendation be made to the planning commission, uh, or from the planning commission to the city council. I mean, and I'm, I'm certainly open to hear ideas that we can write in that, that I report to the city council. But they are pretty eager to get something to the council.
We'll get you something today, I feel pretty sure. Thank you, sir. Point well taken.
Part of the point I was making about this, the marketing signs out front is that people today, and twenty years ago in the early two thousands, we didn't have the technology at our fingertips. We had to look for a sign. We had to find that seashell on the house. But the GPS and the wayfinders are taking you to the properties and that's, that's, that's how people get to where they're going. To me, the valuable information closer to the street is a house number, or maybe it's a house name. But there's gotta be a way to clean that up. It can't be all of the above. And I, if there was a uniform sign on a post, not something the wind's blowing over and somebody else sticks it back wherever it's laying down. There was a uniform post that said ABC Realty and the address. And they were uniform and they were post, put in the ground where they were in the right alignment. Then at least we got some kinda cleanup. I'm a little concerned that moving, having all this signage availability on the building is gonna make the building cluttered too. I, I am concerned about that. I still believe we've gotta do something to clean up the streetscape and make that feel better and still achieve people finding their homes and, and not totally stripping the marketing away. But you know, every other business is regulated in our sign industry. And where they go, the size of the, of the signs and where they go, what they're allowed to put on their building, what they're allowed to put on the street. And so I, I don't see this any different. It's different in that we've done it a certain way forever and this has changed. But you know, I, if there's something out at the street, it ought to be really identifying the property and not, not, and I, I don't think you argue, there's, there's a, there is clutter in the, and maybe you don't, maybe not at your properties. I got you, Jeff. I got you, Jeff.
The trash cans are worse than anything. I mean, it, it is, you could have six cans at every one of these houses and without sidewalks, it is a mess.
Yeah, and so we're addressing the trash cans, but that doesn't mean that we don't need sign reform.
Where people don't want. It's ripe with, it's ripe with trash. That's where they are. And that's a difference.
Yeah.
Let's not go down that road.
Agree, agree.
Jeff, I mean, you mentioned it yourself about in the fifty foot lot section, there's a lot of signs, obviously, because.
No, I mean, you say there's a lot of signs. I said, the density of signs is greater because you're only fifty foot lot.
Okay, but there are a lot of signs. I agree on the hundred foot lots down at the end of West Beach that there is a lot of distance between them and some of those aren't even rented so, or for sale. So there aren't many signs down there.
And compliance would help, I think, Frank. I mean, you know, and compliance would help if you said, as, as was mentioned, like Richard said, if it's on the left side, every single case, it's on the left side of the prop, uh, of the driveway of the property, then you're gonna see it uniformly like that. I think we're getting cluttered. I have one that, I've got a house that's right next to one that we manage. It's got two signs, one for each side of the duplex, plus it has three sale signs. So right there in this fifty foot, there's thirty-six, I think it's six signs. That is clutter, absolutely, but to have one sign. Now, again, I, I, I get urged as we walk down this path. If we're gonna, if we're gonna ask owners to take their, their names off their buildings, then you better go all the way back down the beach, do it to every single condo. Cause every single condo is got, right? I mean, it's on the house, it's on the condo, it's part of the condo. So if we're saying you can't have a sign on the house, that's gonna be a problem. And then you better do that all the way back to the condos, cause it's already there.
No, I agree that there's a lot of very pretty name signs on beach houses down there that were planned, designed, and a lot of money put into them. And I would hate to have a regulation which makes those non-conforming and you have to put your, your house branding in that two square feet. I mean, I, I think that would be.
And I think that, again, if you do that, then I would urge, there would be exceptions made grandfather there. Then now you have has and have nots. And then you got some people who build houses, why can't I do it? Well, you didn't come before. I mean, I, when I was staying here in two thousand and four, the beach, I was, I was amazed and also the number of signs, your point, you know, Phillip, it's the number of signs down in West Beach. It was like, every single place is a rental place? I mean, I'd never been here before. And it, it doesn't look like that today. I, that does not look like that.
Begin adding to the two square feet thing, you know, it, they're actually fairly entertaining the branding signs with the name Hakuna Matata and, uh, and all those. So I'm, I'm, I agree with you there.
Again, last, sorry, I've taken up a lot of time, but these monumental signs. I mean, I had an owner who literally, it had a design. It looks like the back of a beach chair, a, uh, an armoire back chair. And this thing's, it's, it's, it's built into the ground. It sits properly at the setback. I mean, it's, or inside, other side of the setback. And it's, it, it stands probably five foot tall and it's got the name of the house. It's got all these shelves in front of it and it's like, and it's. And it's, it stands probably five foot tall and it's got the name of the house, it's got all these shells in front of it and it's, and it's beautiful, right? And it doesn't, it doesn't take away, Fish and Wildlife already doesn't allow you to do anything in these lots. You cannot landscape these things because it's not indigenous to the, so it all is scrub everywhere. And so I think that actually does add value to, and it doesn't take away from, or it doesn't look like clutter. And, and, and last, I promised last thing. What is done in the 2,000 block back to the 100 block is not the same as from the 2,000 block or the 3200 block. It's not. So if you do a mandate across all of that, the whole beach, it's, it's, it's not the same beach.
Okay, okay, guys. At this time, I'm going to mail, let's close the public hearing and the chair will entertain a motion.
Before we get to a motion, I've been doodling over here three or four different times, but would the council or the commission think that allowing one, only one freestanding sign, no larger than four square feet, to be placed not in the right of way be an appropriate moderate change? Because like Jeff was saying, there are potentially multiple signs on each dwelling unit, two to three signs on each half of a duplex on a property. Could have six, some type of transactional signs, that's too many. But potentially as a first step of this ordinance, restricting it to one freestanding, not in the right of way sign of a four-square-foot sign to be put whatever they want to put in. Hopefully they would put, hopefully they would put the name of the house, the name of the dwelling unit and their business name.
And where are you going to put the sign?
You know, put it not in the right of way. They can put it as long as it's south of the right of way or north of the right of way, they can put it one per dwelling unit. So a duplex could potentially have two because two potential companies would put a sign up. The other option, and I sent this to Scott last week, or last month after we did this, came up with, you know, those four-by-four posts that have actual numbers on the posts that are legible, that are fluorescent or that are reflective, so that at each driveway, there would be a uniform post. You know, that's an option, but that's almost something that the city would have to do generally throughout the whole district or come up with specific color, height, size, number, size, and require the businesses to place that on those properties. And not just the businesses, but also homeowners that live there. So that would be a longer process, I think, than to take a first bite out of a restriction of a sign ordinance.
Well, if you feel deeply about that, I would make a motion, sir.
There's a lot of movement and a lot of, a lot of discussion here and trying to, trying to make a recommendation to move this forward. And I know you want, you're ready to get this off your plate here, but so more work to do. But I think there's a valid point in that 2,000-block change too, in the depth of those lots. And so maybe we try to find some common things that the majority of us can agree on that need to be addressed in the recommendation. And to me, that would be one, that there's a different analysis moving west of the 2,000-block to the deeper lots. And, and maybe George wants to weigh in on house numbers being so far off the road versus some point, do we need to require the house number to be out closer to the street for first responders? And so, and if everybody feels like there has to be a sign that's not on the building out in the yard, then is that a recommendation we make? And do we start identifying some uniformity there? I don't know, I just see this hard as it sits with all the different opinions and, and all it, how do we move this forward with a yes or no vote? And I'm not just trying to find us a path to get there with, with some recommendation from this body that means something because.
Well, the way this writes, is written today, I cannot support this as written. That would have to be a no vote on how this is written today. Doesn't mean that I don't want to see some change, wholesale change to what is happening down there. But this, this to me doesn't fix the problem, it might exasperate it by putting more up on houses, as you've mentioned.
And what I'll do is after the planning commission takes action, I'm taking notes and of course we're recording the discussion. But I will type up a report to give to the council. And so the standard process for zoning text amendment is we have an initial presentation at a committee of the whole work session. And then it gets advertised. So again, the committee of the whole, you'll probably actually have two chances to talk to the planning, to the city council. The council can kind of incorporate these changes as you direct me today. And then we'll, we'll flesh out that ordinance, I guess, or advertise, and then the council can, can choose what they do with it. So again, I know the council's pretty eager to hear something. So I mean, if you can give me some guidelines, I can certainly type up something for the report to the council.
Would this be a time for us to have a work session for one hour, sit around the table and hash through some suggestions or some, some concepts with staff so that we can kind of better understand pitfalls?
I mean, that's, that's an option. I mean, that's, if that's the pleasure of the commission. Again, I'll just tell you, the direction I've gotten from some of the council is give us something to, to work with, so.
Some kind of a motion, guys, we need to, we need to respond if we can to the city council with some kind of a motion. Grant?
All right, I'll just do it. I'll make the motion, we table this, this vacation rental sign ordinance discussion and ask the staff to put together a work session for us to have some opportunity to debate so we can come back with a different ordinance revision draft. Because I know timing is the essence, because we've got spring coming right around the corner, and so no signs have to be made and printed, et cetera. But do they have the appropriate information that you're wanting to put on them? I understand.
No, it'd be public.
It's public, you're absolutely welcome to be part of it.
Okay, we have a motion to table this ZA 2550. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
I'm sorry.
So we'll, we'll work on schedule on that. I'll do my best to, I have some phone numbers, so I'll reach out, we'll advertise that. But yeah, we'll, we'll get that scheduled just as quick as we can.
Is there an advertising requirement for work sessions?
It'll probably be the standard open meetings, so I, I would prefer a minimum of seven-day notice so that we can post.
I was hoping it wouldn't.
No, yeah, seven days is adequate for, for legal notices. I mean, the more, the better, but, but I know, you know, we have holidays and everything else coming up.
And we can make sure that they get the seven-day notice.
Yeah, I will, yeah, I'll, I'll make sure, I'll call them on the phone or text them or something before, make sure they get my emails.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to. Thank you, thanks for your input, guys. ZTA 2507 zoning text amendment, Scott.
Yes, sir. So we have another zoning text amendment, hopefully this one is a little less contentious. The request here is to modify the use table. So currently our BG zoning district, our general business zoning district allows townhouses as a buy right use. The proposal before you is to change that from a buy right to a conditional use permit, a CUP. So the purpose of the general business district is to provide locations for a wide range of commercial or retail offices, hotel motel-type businesses. I'll just read, the definition of townhome is, is a building designed for occupied by, by their single-family attached dwellings. So two or more single-family attached dwellings. And then uses for, that are allowed through conditional use permit, these are typically, their, their uses, this is not an around or variance or anything of the zoning ordinance. This is fully valid use of zoning ordinance, but certain uses sometimes need additional scrutiny or examination before allowing them in a certain zone. And that's the purpose of the conditional use permit. You look at the context, you look at the location, you look at the proposed design and, and then the planning commission and city council can better decide if that's a, an appropriate use for that particular location. And I probably just said everything that's on the screen here, so let's get past that one. So again, the, the, right now, the use table eight dash three A for BG uses has townhouses as our, or buy right uses in the BG zone. The proposal is to change that to CUP, conditional use permit. I will just tell you, so I know every once in a while, or you've seen some rezonings in the past, it gets to city council. The commercial aspect of it is typically fine. Then there's some hesitation on whether or not townhouses may be built there. So sometimes the council or the planning commission will request to put a condition of no townhouses. So this will kind of remove that concern and, and would actually make them conditional all the time in BG. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So all you're doing is changing the eight dash three A BG to a CUP, basically.
Yes, sir. Townhomes.
Just for that one use, that one use, right?
Yes, sir, that's the only proposal on this one.
Anybody have any questions, staff?
I mean, I think it only makes sense, I don't know why we didn't change, when we changed that on multiple, on multi-family, I don't know why we didn't change townhouse at the same time, because the intent was there.
Right.
All right. Go have a, open up the public hearing, anybody have a comment on this request? No comments from the floor. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, Mel, and the chair will entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve the zoning text as submitted.
A motion?
Take it.
Motion, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay, done, Scott.
All right, next one is very similar to the, the one you just heard. This is for multi-family or multiple-family dwellings in a BN zone, the neighborhood business zone. Similar enough, neighborhood business is again, it's, it's used for neighborhood scale businesses. Sometimes it can be used as a transition between heavier commercial into residential, or sometimes it can be a standalone. It's a great zone for near residential that had, maybe, maybe you want to have a corner store or a deli or something. But so again, it's a fantastic zone to use, but there's hesitation often because right now the zoning ordinance allows multifamily or apartments in that BN district. So again, what often happens, whether in planning commission or in city councils, a condition is put on it saying, we'll do BN, but no multifamily. So similar to the last request, this one is to change multifamily as a buy right use in BN to a CUP use. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
But we're not proposing to change townhouses in this.
Not, not in this particular one. So I certainly can do that, but yeah, this, this just particular presentation, we were just looking at multifamily, but I, I think that's fine if you want to.
To me, to me, there's not a whole lot of this neighborhood business zone left out there and it's in areas that are built out already primarily. And so determining what's a good transition, multifamily or, and to me, townhouse is not much different, other than it does limit the height and that kind of stuff. But I think there's a lot to consider as we infill around existing uses and especially trying to go from a single-family toward a commercial. I personally would like to see them both.
Yes, sir.
A CUP.
Yeah, if, if someone might make their motion to include that, we'll send that in our report to council and present it that way to council.
I mean, just behind that, also like Lakewood Villas and Lakewood Townhomes, those are townhomes.
Yes, sir.
People think they're condos or whatever, but, and there's a lot of units in there. And so by just saying, okay, now I'm going to just, it's, it's multifamily, just a different type of ownership. So I mean, I think it goes along with multifamily. Unless, unless I'm missing something, tell me.
Well, I mean, they are a little bit different, but I mean, I, I think having the opportunity for a variety of housing types is great. Again, BN is a really good zoning district to use in a lot of places, but I think there's hesitancy because of the, right now, the buy right residential. So I think the CUP is appropriate, it allows planning commission and city council to consider each individual request when it's, when it's a zone for BN.
I mean, one of the brains is here is.
Frank wants you to comment, Mel.
Lee, I mean, what the, regarding townhomes and multifamily.
Yeah, I think that one, I mean, to Phillip's point, that we don't have, you know, a lot of the areas where we have BN, they're built out for the most part, and those are opportunities where we really want that, that coffee shop, where we really want that neighborhood store. Or we want a mixed-use building, there's some great infill, I mean, you can take Galway House over there, for example, it's a two-story mixed-use building. That's a perfect example of how we integrate residential or lodging uses into these neighborhood centers, into a BN area. But what we're concerned about is there's some undeveloped BN areas, there's some, a lot of, as we've presented over the years, undeveloped BG property where there are a lot of developers who are looking at those as multifamily opportunities rather than business, commercial opportunities. And we feel like we don't need to take those commercial opportunities away and, and have just straight multifamily in those areas. We're keeping mixed use as a buy right use in these districts because it still allows you to get the rooftops in these districts to serve the, the commercial and restaurant uses. So we still want residences, we want people there, but we don't want, you know, our commercial districts, we don't recommend that our commercial districts be used as a quasi-multi-family district.
Like multifamily only.
Yes, so if you want to do mixed use, that's great, we'd love to see more mixed use, it would support businesses in those districts. But we're also, you know, we've, we've got an independent school system now. And we, we have infrastructure that we're spending a lot of time and money and effort, tax dollars on improving our infrastructure. So if we let these commercial districts continue to be used as multifamily or townhouse districts, it really takes away opportunities for commercial development and puts more strain on our infrastructure and our schools. So this is one way, again, as, as Scott said, we're not taking that ability away altogether, but each application will be reviewed on its merits for multifamily. So if you do have a 10, 20-acre piece of BN property and you're adjacent to some existing single-family, you know, if you want to do some mixed use, you want to do some commercial, you want to do some offers, office, you want to do restaurants, but then you want to use a portion of that to transition with townhouses, the CUP process can get you there. And you're, you'll, as long as it's in line with the context, and if you'll remember, the, the CUP process, there are 14 criteria that we review those against for recommendations through the planning commission. So it doesn't take that right away completely, but there's a higher level of scrutiny based on the context of these developments where we can recommend approval of townhouses or multifamily. I think the, the flip side of that is that we recently updated both our multifamily standards and our townhouse standards so that the two townhouse developments that you referenced, I'm not familiar with them, but I doubt that they would meet our townhouse regulations that are in place today. So we do have enhanced standards, both for the townhouse use and for multifamily uses that won't replicate any of the things that we have built in our community today, they'll be much different. So we do have that kind of as a saving grace. If, if, if you all thought that multifamily wasn't or was appropriate in BN or townhouses were appropriate in BG, we at least have some enhanced standards to fall back on. But we do feel that moving more towards a mixed-use type of, of development that has residential integrated into it rather than, you know, allowing these businesses to be multifamily is definitely a step in the right direction.
Thanks very much for explaining all of that. Very good, that's very helpful. Okay, anybody else from the audience would like to make comments about this zoning text amendment? Okay, Mel, close the public hearing and chair will entertain a motion. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we.
Chairman, I make a motion that we, um, approve zoning text amendment ZTA 2508, but adding townhome uses as a conditional use permit to the amendment.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Read that, what you said again about adding.
CUP.
Adding the townhomes.
Adding townhome use as a CUP.
Okay, thank you. We got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Scott, done.
Yes, sir.
We've got bylaws update. I don't understand what that is.
Sir, we save the best for last.
Oh, no.
Actually, that's not true. Second, second to last, the very, the best is last. So just, yeah, give me a few minutes. So I tried to email everyone last night, but, um, it obviously didn't work.
You want us to go into officer elections while you get ready, or you?
Uh, so I'm gonna hand out a hard copy of your current bylaws. My request today is, let me kind of go through these, let's have a little discussion, give me some direction, and then we'll come back in December with a draft for you to, for you to review and then potentially adopt if, if you so wish. So state code, uh, 1524 says the planning commission shall adopt rules for transaction of business. That's all that says. So, so bylaws, so we just call them bylaws. Uh, so on the screen, I'm just gonna go through your current bylaws. They're pretty good. Uh, there's a few little items that probably worth changing. So for instance, I, I think it's good to have those purpose statements. It does talk about the police jurisdiction. We don't really regulate in the PJ anymore, so that may be something we change. Uh, in your member section, uh, it's mostly a repeat of the state code. Typically, I, I think that's a little redundant, particularly since we can't change state code anyway, and if and when state code code does change, we would have to, we'd have to comply with it. So I, I would suggest probably just removing a lot of the state code redundant language. That's not really necessary. I, I do want to ask about that underlined where it says each member of the commission shall be a resident of the city. I will point out state code does not say that. Uh, it's not worded, you don't have to be, I'm not saying that's good policy, but that is what state code says. Uh, and additionally, I don't know that the planning commission can impose requirements on the mayor or whomever appoints these people. So that may just be something that, I don't know if that's the pla- the bylaws are the place for that. That's, that's a, that may be an, an ordinance or a, a a regulation outside of your bylaws. So just pointing that out. Uh, I will, well, I'll just give you a quick recap of who the planning commission is. So there's nine members. First member is the mayor or the mayor's designee, who got Dr. Mayor Edwards Law, was reappointed as the mayor's designee last night. Uh, second member is a member of the council selected by the council. Councilman Harris was selected by the council last night. And then a third member is an administrative official of the city. Mr. Grant Brown was, uh, reappointed in that position last night. All those four run, uh, within the terms of the mayor and or council. There's six other members, all of those folks are appointed by the mayor and you have six year terms. So Mr. Ray Moore was appointed to fill out the remainder of Jennifer Guthrie's seat. He was appointed last night by the mayor, uh, through 2028, I believe. So, so you're just finishing out the, the six year term that Ms. Guthrie
Correct.
was in. All right, so the next page, uh, so, well, there you go. There's the terms of offices. Again, that's a lot of repeat of state code, the vacancy things, a repeat of state code. So not necessarily required, necessary, I think, in your bylaws. Uh, the officer section, I underlined, so it says a chairman and a vice chairman shall, shall be elected from among the commissioner's six appointed members. That's what your bylaws say today, so that's what you'll have to keep in mind for today. Uh, I will tell you that, uh, there is an attorney general opinion out there. There was a question about how state code words that the officers are selected among the appointed members. I don't know if I can help you, Mr. Harris, but the AG opinion did say that the administrative official and the mayor's designee can be counted among those appointed members. So if, if the commission wants to change your bylaws to open up those positions to, to the other appointed folks, that's, that's something you can consider.
I think we've always operated with everybody voting.
Okay, well, as far as being an officer, chair and a vice chair, that's, that's the, what that is. So.
No, yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, that's kind of worded in a way, so we can change that. Like I said, I don't know if I can help you, Mr. Harris, so you, you may just have to. We can, we can talk to the AG if we need to. The meeting section, so there's a line that says the election of officers shall occur during the regular scheduled meeting in November. I would probably move that to the officer section. I did want to ask the opinion of the commission. I don't know why that's November meeting. I'm simple minded. It helps me just to think of the last meeting of the year, make it in December, and then that person, that officer will serve for one year. So, this is the objection, that's, it's just easier for my, my simple brain to say, let's just do it for a full year and do it in December. So. But again.
Who said it for November? Who said it for November?
I don't know, it's, it was in your bylaws.
Seven bylaws.
So this may have been created when the fiscal year was October first. And so it would have been the first meeting following the fiscal year versus the calendar year that we switched to.
Yeah.
Ten years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, but you're right, okay, so.
That's maybe why it was set for November, twenty years ago.
We can discuss that.
Yeah, maybe, but I mean, if you're following, like I said, that just seems, makes sense to me, it's easy to remember. Uh, this line I've got underlined, in the instance where a quorum is not obtained, all items scheduled for consideration by the commission shall, unless withdrawn, be automatically scheduled for the next scheduled regular meeting. I, I want to talk to our city attorney, I want to be very careful on this. So state code says, the planning commission will meet once a month. It just says, I mean, whether you have business or not, you're supposed to meet once a month. And there's certain language about subdivision plats. After they're heard, a decision must take place within thirty days. I would be very apprehensive of, say you met today and so, sorry, there's no, no quorum, we're just gonna meet a month from now. I, I wouldn't want to run into any legal issues of delaying that more than thirty days.
And then it gets approved.
Yeah, you're right, you don't want automatic approval. So, so I think it's worth looking at that language. In the event there's not a quorum, and particularly if you have a plat, I would strongly recommend scheduling a special called meeting within, you know, before the next month's meeting, just to cover yourself.
Haven't done that in a while, but we have done those.
Good, good. So, but I would take that out of your bylaws, just because like I said, that's, I, I don't think that's very good language. Uh, next underline, a quorum shall be required for the commission to take action on any matter and shall consist of five voting members. Generally, that's fine. Now, state code specifically says, and this is, you know, maybe a year, year and a half out, but when it comes time for a comprehensive plan or a modification to the comprehensive plan, you must have six affirmative votes. So I would say let's just reword that to accommodate that section of state code, but ordinarily a quorum is five, and you should have a majority of those present with a quorum for, for regular, regular business. Uh, the conduct of members section. So I'll just read this. In addition, any member with any relationship to any party having any interest in any matter brought before the commission, whether directly or indirectly, shall immediately recuse himself. So reading that, I was, I mean, if, like, you go to church with somebody or just friends with somebody, you're gonna recuse. I feel like Goshers is small, that's, that's gonna be really difficult worded that way. I know we don't, probably don't practice that, but I, I would suggest us kind of reword that if you have a, a financial or pecuniary or like familiar interest with somebody, you should recuse, but if you just know somebody, I, I don't, I would hope that's not a reason. So that's, that's worded really strictly. I did want to ask if, if the commission wants some language or some discussion about ex parte contact. So that, that's gonna be when you're at the grocery store or you're at home and somebody calls you on your cell phone and says, hey, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I got a case next Tuesday on the agenda, I want to talk about it. I would, I would suggest you steer away from that, that's called ex parte. So you really want all discussion on cases before you to happen in the public meeting. You don't want public, and it protects you, protects them, protects everybody, uh, the integrity of the process. So I would suggest having some language in avoiding that. And if it, like, sometimes you can't get away from it at the grocery store and they won't stop talking to you, you maybe want to disclose it. So, hey, you know, Mr. Smith caught me at church and was all in my ear about, you know, we, I didn't talk about, we didn't deliberate, we didn't talk about how I was gonna vote or what was gonna happen, but, so I think that just keeps everybody safe from a, from an ethical and, and process integrity standpoint. Uh, the, a couple of things I would suggest adding, again, these are the rules for transaction of business, so I think we have a pretty standard layout, but it's probably good to put in there, just, you know, in case things changes, but kind of an order of business or the order of your agenda. Uh, I basically copied our current agenda, uh, order, so if you want to change any of that, I would, and this is just my personal preference. You know, we separate, like, site plans and then flats and everything. I'd rather just do them all in order. If it's a public hearing, we can do a public hearing, but you know, every once in a while, when we want to kind of reorder and put stuff toward the end like this, it just gets out of whack sometimes when we have it all lumped together. So if we can just do a straight one, two, three, four, five, I think that makes it a little bit easier, unless anybody has a big objection to that.
No, that doesn't, um, keep us from changing the order of how they're, like, say we have three public hearings and one we know is gonna be really long and two that are gonna be really short.
Correct, yeah.
We can put the short ones up ahead, so those people don't have to stay here.
Absolutely, yes, sir. So we'll, we typically will do in order of, as they're received. Uh, but now we, we can kind of, we can kind of judge that sometimes, we know, and then the chairman's always gonna have the ability to reorder as needed, so. So, yeah, that, that won't be set in stone, but this will be the general, uh, process. Uh, a- and it may be, so this is kind of what Andy goes through at the very beginning, it's kind of just how we, we hold the public hearings. We can embed that into the bylaws. So, so again, the, the chairman will say, you know, next item. Staff will kind of give a overview, a request. We are trying to be careful about when we do some of these rezoning requests or subdivisions or, or CUPs or anything of, we're presenting the facts and the staff report, but we're not advocating for the applicant. So, you know, if, if somebody wants to get a CUP for townhomes and BG, then they need to come make that application to you. So we'll give the maps, we'll talk about it, we'll give our, our professional recommendation, but the applicant really needs to be the ones advocating for themselves. So we're just trying to be careful about that, because we don't want to make it sound like we're working for the applicant and trying to influence from that direction, so. So again, that, that would be something I would probably put in the bylaws is just give some, uh, just a layout. Again, the chairman would have the discretion to change as needed. I think the very last thing is just asking the commission, um, do you want to embed in your bylaws? I know it's typically not a big issue, but it's sometimes good to have time limits. Speakers have three minutes or five minutes or whatever you want to say. You can, again, chairman has the opportunity to kind of open that up a little bit, but it's sometimes good, if you do have a contentious, you can say, well, our bylaws, these are the rules, three minutes, we're gonna hold you to it, we're gonna time everybody. So that's just nice to have written in cases necessary.
And just use it when we need to.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I think that's fine. And if you need to extend it, you, you can, but, uh, and then uh, it's sometimes nice to have some language about kind of the decorum of how, and again, I know we're, we get informal here and that's typically fine, but typically you don't want your speakers to be turning around and trying to talk to the audience. They need to be talking to, to the chairman or to the commission as a whole. They don't need to really be talking to staff and, you know, we, we know how, how they can kind of put on a performance sometimes. So again, that's a good thing to have in your bylaws. So if it turns into a problem, you can say, well, these are our rules.
And also, you know, like if somebody's already come up here and already done something, goes and sits down and he gets back up again.
Correct, yeah. The, the general rule is you get one time, it's, then maybe they can speak again once everybody else is done, yeah.
After they hear what we talked about, then they want to get up and say something.
Mel, get your brew, Mel.
Come to the microphone so folks at home can hear you.
So anything else about like, so what, what, I just wanted to kind of hear from you, make sure I'm heading in the right direction. I'll bring something to the December meeting. And I'll get it sent out beforehand, of course. I'll bring something to December meeting for you to, to further consider and potentially adopt if, if that's your pleasure, but.
Thanks for reviewing all of it.
Absolutely. So, so it's, you know, it's like I said, it's been two thousand and seven, is that what it was?
Seventeen years.
Yeah, it's been a little while, so it's good.
And, and it's good for the new people, too.
That, that too, yeah.
Know how we run things.
Hey, if you have any other ideas, so I, again, I tried to send an email yesterday, it didn't work, but if it does go through, I'll try again. I, I'm linked to a handful of other cities bylaws, so I know you're probably eager to do this, but if you want to read other bylaws and find ideas or anything you think of, call me, email me and we can.
Old Mobile, anybody, just like. Who would you recommend?
Oh, I recommend, but I, I think I do have Baldwin in there. I had the city I just left, Prattville's in there.
I think you'd tell us how that goes.
I think you've done an excellent job.
Well, like I said, you know, we'll do it next month. So if anything else, it's just, you know, that makes sense, please let me know.
All right, sir.
All right, last but not least, uh, this is your thing, but, uh, your current bylaws do say officer elections.
It's time, it's time of the year for our elections. Uh, we do this once a year. I've talked to Frank Malone, who is the co-chairman, who's agreed to chair another year. I'll stay another year unless y'all want to put somebody else here, that's fine. But I will open up the floor for nominations and we'll go from there.
I'll make a motion that we continue the slate as in past, as this past year, as Pete is chair and Frank is vice chair.
You got a motion? Need a second?
A second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, done. Thank you both for agreeing.
Sir.
Anybody ever wanted to take my position? But I've enjoyed. I hope I. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved. Okay, we're out of here. Thanks, guys, for coming.
Thank you. Good meeting.